Why you want to sit by yourself?
All right, in 601, and I'll call this portion of Webster's workshop order. I believe we have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is, I believe, a discussion on the open meetings law and changes to the video conferencing procedure, which has been proposed. So, I think that at this time, John, you're going to address us regarding this law.
Yeah, so the handout that Heather just gave you, and I kind of put together, Heather and I got it when we participated in their webinar about the changes to video conferencing. So, and as it says, typical of the New York State Legislature, they stuck these changes into the New York State budget, you know, it's got nothing to do with budgets. But they love to do stuff like that. And so, what happened was, is they repealed, there was a 103 subsection C that governed video conferencing previously. They repealed that and replaced it with a new section, 103-a. So, the first page is just sort of a reminder of what the open meetings law requires, four basic requirements, that the public must be given notice of the meeting. You don't have to advertise an agenda or what's going to happen at the meeting, just that a meeting is going to happen. And the public must be allowed to attend and observe the meeting in person, except for executive sessions. And then, basically, any proposed local law, rules, regulations, resolutions, policy, any documents that are going to be discussed at the meeting, you have to make them available to the public ahead of time, to the extent practical. And you have to make minutes of the meeting available within two weeks of the meeting, and then within one week of any executive session. So, and the village complies with all that, although the village website is a bit quirky as to where Heather has to stick the documents that are going to be discussed at a meeting. You have to click on the first of the webpage, there's a section for village board agendas, and you click that, and it takes you to the village code that's maintained by, 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 no, general code. And then, in there, Heather puts, there's another tab, other little links to the agenda, to the minutes, and to, she basically puts in the board packet that you guys get. It's a little awkward sometimes to find, but I guess...
Hopefully, it cleaned up a little bit.
That's the way, that's the way the website works, you know? And unless you wanted to redo the website, spend some money to do that, that's where it is. But, so, the new video conferencing procedure is under 103-a. And it authorizes public bodies to conduct meetings using video conferencing, so long as a quorum of the public body is physically present at one or more of the locations where the public can also attend in person. So, for purposes of the village trustees, you got to have at least three people show up at the village hall. Technically, it doesn't have to be at village hall, you could do it at the town library if you wanted to, as long as the public knows about it, and the public can show up at the library. But you got to have a quorum of at least three people at a location where the public can attend. So, and then you got to, the other requirements start on the second page. You have to, before you can do it, the village would have to adopt a local law following a public hearing to authorize the use of video conferencing. And in that local law, you can authorize it not only for the village board of trustees, but like for the, you could do it for the zoning board too at the same time. Or you could leave it up to the zoning board to adapt their own resolution. They don't have, obviously, they can't do local laws, they can do a resolution though, authorizing it, but...
So, do they not have to abide by this if we only pass one that says those laws? Because Joe said it would never really come out because they thought that was...
Well, yeah, they, they then could not, they could not have someone participate by video conferencing. Although, apparently, the committee on open government, even though they repealed 103-C, they told us at the webinar that you can still do traditional video conferencing, which means that, 607, mark that down.
Park has inappropriate tighter.
So, the traditional video conferencing is, that wherever you're doing, whoever's being done remotely, the public has to be allowed there. You got to tell them where the public is, where they can go, which isn't really practical because, you know, do you really want the public showing up at your house to sit on their couch with you while you participate by video conferencing? But that's, that's the way the law was and still is. But for practical reasons, you know, it's really not, I wouldn't recommend that anybody do that. So, you're right, so if you don't do it for the ZBA, they can't, you know, they really, for our practical purposes, couldn't have a member participate by video conferencing. But yes, they do have the two alternate members that are pretty faithful about showing up, so they've, they've got, you know, a couple of extra people, so, although it wouldn't be a big deal to just add the ZBA into the local law.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not that big a deal. So, and then I don't know if any other committees of the village, you could add them to historical preservation committee, the parks and rec committee, you could, you could add the others to do it by video conferencing if you wanted to. But that's something that, if we're going to, you know, it's got to be in the local law. So, if you want to do that, you got to let me know, so when we draft it, we include those additional bodies. And then what the, what the new statute provides is that you have to have that quorum physically present at a meeting in which the public can attend, unless a member is unable to be physically present due to extraordinary circumstances. And the statute defines, well, it doesn't define extraordinary circumstances, but it says that it includes things like disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, or any other significant or unexpected factor or event, which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meeting. And that is sort of self-certifying, meaning that, let's say, Jude, you adopted the local law, Jude couldn't attend a meeting because she was ill, but she, so, within at least four days, she would have to tell, and I would suggest we make Heather a exception, she would have to notify the clerk that there's an extraordinary circumstance, "I'm ill, I can't attend the meeting, so I want to do it by video conferencing." You got to have that at least four days, because then Heather, unless the notice that goes into the Herald of the Meeting said that one or more members may be participating by video conference, she'd have to put out another notice, because the public has to know that...
Four days.
They said, they told us it was four days, four days notice.
Yes, you got, like, you got to plan your severe illness.
Well, one, well, one thing they suggest is, you could notice every single meeting and include the contingency that one or more members may participate by video conferencing due to extraordinary circumstances.
And then just include the link on everyone here so that they're covered.
That's, that's on smarter, yeah.
But then, yeah, but then you have to, the notice has to include the Zoom link or however you're doing it, so that the public, members of the public are entitled to, to look in on whoever is video conferencing. You can't just sit home, so they did away with, you can't do it by the telephone anymore, it's got to be video. And you have to set up Zoom so that your name shows up, so they know who is being remote. So, you can, you know, you can expand the, what you include as extraordinary circumstances, but it has to be, it has to be limited to a significant or unexpected factor or event. So, I'm not sure Daryl planning to be in Florida is a significant or unexpected event. It would qualify as an exceptional or an extraordinary circumstance.
There you go. Four days notice, yeah.
Well, you can do it sooner or later than the four days, but that just puts the burden on Heather to get a notice out.
Yeah.
You know, it is, it is practical.
Was it your understanding, though, if they wanted to still listen, they could do that by Zoom, but you would not be included in, you wouldn't be able to vote, and you wouldn't be able to...
Of course you could listen, that's, anyone could listen.
Well, on Zoom might be too.
Yeah, you should be able to, right?
Yeah, or they could just do the Facebook thing, essentially, live stream it, they can, obviously, they can, anybody can look in at that, but they can't participate in the meeting.
AC works good.
Yeah, the statute says, "or any other significant or unexpected factor or event which precludes the member's physical attendance at such meeting." So, going on a trip would be an obligation that probably doesn't...
Well, I agree, I quite agree.
So, so, and you can go into executive session with somebody doing it by video conferencing. And, you know, there's some, the minutes of the meetings involving video conferencing must include which members participated remotely. So, the public notice must inform the public that video conferencing will be used, how they can, or where they can view or participate in the meeting, you know, the link, the Zoom link. And it's also got to tell them where required documents and records will be posted or available. And then it's also got to identify the physical, like, location where members of the public body will be participating in the meeting, where the public can attend, so just village hall, the normal kind of thing. So, and then, if you use video conferencing, the video record of the meeting has to be posted or linked to the village website within five days of the meeting, and they've got to sit on the website for a minimum of five years. And you don't have to transcribe the meetings, but if someone requests the transcripts, then you got to do it, you got to provide a transcript of them. Well, that was, with the COVID rules for remote meetings, transcripts were mandatory. So, now they're not mandatory, they're only if someone, a member of the public, or someone asked for a transcript.
Which is awesome.
Otherwise, they just watch the meeting, you got to, you know, the village website, so... So, you know, members of the public must be able to participate in the proceedings via video conference in real time. So, you got to give, basically, you got to give the public the same opportunity for public participation as in-person participation. So, at the open in the floor section, you got to open it up to anybody that might be watching it. We've done that before.
Yeah, we've done it.
Nobody's actually, you know, taken advantage of it, but...
Done, yeah, just Peter.
Peter has, yeah, Peter had.
So, and then, the other thing, and I don't know if, you know, there's a federal law that says that basically anybody's website, including the village's website, has to, has to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, basically, that blind people, hearing impaired people have to be able to, be able to access your website. And lots of companies, especially private companies, have been sued for failure to, there's like some lawyers that specialize in going around and... So, whoever, and it's not a hard thing, whoever, if you use some outside source to maintain help with your website, they generally know how to do it, to make it ADA compliant. But, especially when you use video conferencing, the method by which you access the video, how the public access the video has to be ADA compliant. So, I don't know if Zoom is automatically ADA compliant, but if it ain't, if it ain't, you got to, you know, you got to figure out a way to make it ADA compliant. If you look, and this is down at the second to last paragraph on page two, information on how, on how meetings can be made accessible to attendees with disabilities can be found online at thissection508.gov. It's a federal website, and I went on it, and basically, actually, that webpage no longer exists, but it provides you a link to other webpages, which, like, unless you're a computer geek and know this kind of stuff, it's kind of incomprehensible as to what they're saying you got to do. But my, my suggestion would be for someone at the village to, you know, contact whoever the people you use.
I just found that Zoom is accessible, but our website, I don't really use.
Yeah.
We have a very antiquated website, I don't know.
That's good that I'm on it. Can you turn on your laptop?
Can't hear, you can see what's happening, you can't see, but you can hear what's happening.
Well, it's like a button, and if you're blind, you won't be able, at least be able to read it to you. Like, your phone can be like that, so you go on your phone, but not necessarily a computer.
So, in the, in the new 103A, there's also an exception for the public being able to attend and participate if a, either the state or the locality has declared a public emergency. So, if we get like a terrible snowstorm or something like that, and the mayor declares a state of emergency within the rest of, and it just so happens to be a Thursday, you know, the village board meeting, you can do it basically the old-fashioned remote way, and the public, you don't have to provide for public participation. But that probably won't happen very often. So, so the first, the first question is, does the village board of trustees want to employ the new video conferencing procedure for its members? Yes or no?
Yes.
So, if it's yes, then we got to do the local law. Okay? So... And you wanted to apply to the...
They couldn't vote, then, you're saying no?
You don't have to, if you don't want to.
They want to.
Daryl doesn't want to.
Daryl doesn't want to? Well, do at least three of you want to? If at least three of you do, then we can still do it, despite Daryl's opposition. I don't know what your opposition is.
I don't have a problem with it, but I don't know why they don't.
Because in case someone gets sick, or their significant other gets extremely ill, and they got to go to the hospital or whatever, they can still participate via video conferencing.
Even though if my...
If I'm in the hospital with my significant other, I don't give up.
I was just going to say, that's a bad example, that's not working well.
Well, whatever, that's your own variety. And you might be, and who knows, you might be too sick to want to participate also, but...
But then you need four days notice.
But you never know, you know?
Well, that's, I can't, yeah.
You know, let's say your significant other isn't that sick, they don't have to be in the hospital, but they're at home and they need someone to help them out and care for them, and, but it's not like 24/7 that you got to be around them, so you can still take off an hour to participate by video conference in a, in an old...
That's good.
You know? And plus, you got to remember, you know, unless a future board of trustees decided to repeal such a local law, and I don't know why they would, you know, you're doing this not just for yourselves, but for future, for future too.
This is where technology is.
It is, absolutely.
So, so, to apply to the village board of trustees, the ZBA, who else, or what else?
Historical?
Historic preservation?
Yeah.
Historic rec?
Wait a second, I can't write that fast. Historic preservation.
But you got to understand that they have to have the ability to do all this stuff too, and we...
Well, that's exactly...
Parks and Rec are going to have their own stuff, or are they using our stuff, you know what I mean?
They don't have it.
They should use, they should use the village stuff.
No, like, historic preservation, we don't, we meet at the museum, we don't...
Well, the public's invited to the museum, right? So, all you got to, all they have to do is, the village has a Zoom account, right? So, I don't think it would be that much of a burden for the village clerk or some designated to set up a Zoom meeting for the board of trustees, and they just...
And they have to maintain it on five years as well?
Huh?
Would they have to maintain those meetings on the website for five years as well?
Yeah. That's what we're saying there.
Yeah.
Only those meetings that you Zoom?
I mean, Peter has completely...
Only those meetings that you...
And then I probably wouldn't want to give our log in because then they might be able to at least...
Look, if you don't want to include them, that's fine too, but, you know, make your decision. If you want to leave an op...
I would say board of appeals personally and village board. ZBA and village board. Those are the two significant ones.
Yeah.
I mean, how many, there are only three people or whatever on Parks and Rec.
Yeah, we've only got like five people for the historic preservation.
Okay, when the historic preservation board or committee, do they actually provide appropriate public notice of its meetings?
Yes.
It gets published in the Webster here?
Yeah, it's on the, well-known T. J. Lucy's website.
That's not appropriate, that's not...
Yeah, it's not.
It's because...
He doesn't give anything to you, does he, Peter? No.
Well, those boards need to comply with the open meetings law. The public can show up at their meetings, but...
So, let's work on that complying before we even get into this part.
They, they got to first comply, they've got the basics of the open meetings law.
So, let's stick with Daryl's list, and then we could always add these people here.
Yeah, that's all I can do.
Yeah, well, you could, yeah, you could amend the local law.
Yeah, you do a lot of that sometimes.
All right, so, and...
I will make a note to make sure village sanctions, commissions, or are adequately...
Yes, somebody just send them a little email, whoever the chair of persons are of all of them, yeah.
Peter, 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 Peter.
Yeah. Just to make sure, just to make sure he does that. So... So, we could just leave the extraordinary circumstances as defined in the statute, you know, disability, illness, caregiving responsibilities, then the catch-all, or any other significant or unexpected factors or event.
So, can illness be as in the cold or fever?
Can it be? Well, I suppose so. It's up to the, I guess it's up to the trustee who doesn't want to go to the meeting. If they feel they are that sick that they shouldn't attend in person, then, okay, because, like I said, it's self-certifying, you know, and nobody's going to, as long as you, when you notify the clerk that I'm ill, it's sort of implied, I'm too ill to attend the meeting, and nobody really should question that. So, if we get into trying to define illness to kind of create more problems than it's worth. Or, just like caregiving responsibilities, now, I got to watch my two-year-old or whatever because the wife had something else to do, you know, nobody's going to question that, you just, you know? There's, there's different levels of sickness and colds, you know? Yeah, sometimes you have a cold and, you know, I don't know...
Two weeks, I know.
Personally, I think, you know, at least for me, for myself, I'd rather have someone stay home rather than come in and start coughing and sneezing all over, you know, all over you, you know, so...
Thanks, Logan.
Coughs and sneezes on us and everything.
Yeah, so...
All family.
So, that's why, I don't think we should say, you know, serious illness or illness which, you know, then you get into too many questions about Daryl. And the committee on open government came out with, you know, model, well, the other thing we, is part of it is, you have to, after you adopt the statute, either at the time of or right after adopting, soon after adopting, the local law, you got to have procedures, published procedures for when video conferencing is allowed. And in there, the committee on open government's model procedures, they just, they didn't expand on extraordinary circumstances, they just left it at what was in the statute. So, we should probably just do that. But you have to, procedures are, when the local law and the procedures are adapted, the procedures have to be posted on the village website. But you have to, procedures are, when the local law and the procedures are adopted, the procedures have to be posted on the village website. So the public knows when video conferencing is allowed.
And a sample of that was somewhere, did you just stick up on the website?
Well. Well, it won't be a sample, it'll be when it actually gets adopted by this board. So all you do is you gotta scan it, and it's a PDF document that you gotta sit somewhere on the village website. Just as an aside, if the website is that cumbersome, I think at some point this board should consider spending some money and maybe doing a new website. And I never could understand why it's villageofwebster.com, where every other governmental entity in New York State doesn't use a dot com, it's a .gov.
Yep, right.
I don't know where the village, the village just decided on its own to, you know, done it. It's just, to me, I never understood why the village, it's villageofwebster.com where everything else is.
Do you remember?
Not here.
Well, does it make a difference?
Does it make a difference on accessibility? Probably not, but it just, it kind of makes it look like it's more official though. Because anybody could come up with a Webster, villageofwebster.com, you know? It's not necessarily the village government.
Why are you bringing this up now?
Because you're talking about what's gotta be posted on the website.
I mean, it's a good.
To me, it's just something that I think somebody should put on their to-do list at some point, is to look into what it would cost to re, to get a better website.
We've put in, we've gotten the licensing stuff, because we really like how we can tell on the website, and it's more like.
Provide a passport. Village Webster.
Want a song too, like a little?
Just change it to that it up.
Well, people who started certain things didn't necessarily know how to do the norm.
All right, so.
Oh, you. I see.
Well, okay, that's pretty much all we gotta, all we gotta do. So I'll put together a proposed local law, and it's gotta go through the same process. You know, we gotta take a resolution to set a date for a public hearing, you have a public hearing, and then after that, we can adapt. Okay, it's just between now and then, there's no remote stuff. Only the traditional way, which is basically the public has to have access, physical access, to wherever the remote member is. So if it's at your house, and you gotta publish, you gotta tell the, tell the public where they can go besides the village office.
They extended it to July 16th.
So they gotta, I don't know, that was just Florida, or is it? The president at your house, or?
No.
No.
Yeah. It's all right, as long, well, as long as you gotta, as long as those three people show up, you know.
Does this have any impact on public hearings? Probably not, because there's still a quorum at the main meeting location, right? This just allows members to remote in and still participate?
Yeah. But you have to, yeah, but so if it's a public hearing, you obviously gotta allow the public to participate in the public hearing remotely also. Not just.
So if a board member's remotely public.
Yeah.
That's a, you can vote remote? You can vote remote, great. Yeah, they have a quorum.
Well, it's no different. You just gotta open up the Zoom meeting to whoever wants to, to the public, that's all. You gotta publish it, publish the link so they know where to go, and then when they sign in, you can't mute them or make it so that they can't participate. You gotta just leave them just as if they were sitting, you know, in the audience.
No, you would be able to mute them after the public speaking, you could just speak whatever you want.
Just only during the public hearing.
Sometimes you tend to allow the public to be there when we're next to it, so. That's natural.
I got some, I got some tape.
All right, so I'll put together.
Does our, does our, the village of Webster local law have to match the expiration date of the one for the state? It's like, does that sunset in 24?
Well, you have the state, the, the, yeah, that's the other thing, the, the state law had a, I don't know why, because, I don't know, I guess the legislature. There's also something in there that the committee on open government is supposed to do some study to see how well the remote video conferencing is working, and to make recommendations for changes, and blah, blah, blah. So they, they included a sunset provision that the statute expires in July of 2024. So if the state authorization expires, then the village one expires too, automatically. Theoretically, you would think, you know, they may tweak it or something, I suppose, but I doubt they, it doesn't seem to me that the legislature is just gonna, the state legislature is just gonna let it expire. But they, they, they put that in there.
Our other local law should be, if not within a quarter.
Which one, what are you talking about? Yes, just let Jake and Aaron know that when it's official.
What's I didn't hear?
Local law seven should be, if it's not already effective, local law seven, because I said it, it's 10 days from when they receive it. So I'll let you know. I didn't get anything from them yet, but.
Oh, it says ZBA one, right?
Yes.
It was like energy and all that.
Siphoning, yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
None on that topic.
Make a motion to close the workshop.
Wait, wait, one, one second, before you do that.
I have a quick one before done. Part of the lake road project, the town and their park named Spanish moving the road, there's a hydrant, an old hydrant on a raw water line that was in the way, and no longer used, and there's no way, so they asked if they could remove it, and there's no reason for it, it can be used a fire department sometimes, a different hydrant down there. Uh, the fire department is, is ask, the Webster fire department called me and asked if they could have that for training purposes, and they said, I'll see if I can get a surplus declaration. Frankly, it's probably cheaper, well, I know it's cheaper for them to go pick it up and take it away than it would be for us, and it's, the scrap value doesn't, would not exceed what it costs us to go get it. So I didn't wanna speak for the board, but I assume the board wouldn't have.
They disconnected.
It's, yeah, they dug it out already, it's just a matter of, yeah, it's just a matter of loading it into a truck and taking it away, but if we send a guy or a couple guys in a truck, and the things are about three, 300 pounds or so.
I support.
Yep.
Declare the blue hydrant across the Old Bayfront surplus and dispose of it to the fire department?
Yep.
Yes, outside of.
Now Heather's gotta write all that down.
I got it, I just wrote I.
You wrote down who made the motion, who seconded.
I made.
Jerry Appleby, Christie Appleby, Christine Maltin seconded.
Heather, you should do some train, and if you get that down, that's impressive.
Yeah, but.
Don't I watch the meeting, I saw how smoothly it went.
But the question is, can Jake, can Jake read what he wrote, you know?
To give a.
Turn around when he looks at it.
I couldn't give it, so I, I did the minutes before she came in the next day, because I said, there's no way she's gonna be able to read what my, I can't read what I wrote if I wait till nine.
I took it down.
So if you ever need to contact Rick if he can't read what Jake sent you.
Do you wanna tell them about the ground field thing more quickly?
Yes.
What about?
It's up tomorrow, right?
Oh, the, the RFP is going on.
Make a motion, moved, seconded, all approved.
All right.
Aye.
Can you just wait one second? I think they need to, you need to talk to them about, did you look at the email that Matt Higgins sent that July 15?
Yeah, that's what I thought you were gonna do, so.
Right, so Daryl, something's gotta happen between now and July 8th, all right? There's the, the bid, the, the bid, the, the, the single bid from Frywell Drilling that came in for the village for the decommissioning of the wells. That bid is only, has to be accepted or rejected by July 8th. The next meeting of this board is July 12th. So.
Video conference. It's gonna be affect by that.
No, I don't know, you can't do it by video conference. And, you know, so you're gonna have to have some kind of a special meeting, although technically, we also learned that you're only supposed to do special meetings if it's an emergency. You know, you've had this bid sitting around for a while, it's, you know, but I guess who's gonna complain, but. But you're only.
They opened them, what, the 24th of May?
Yeah, you've had it since May 24th.
And I've been reporting on the last two or three meetings that the engineers are doing their due diligence and researching them. They talked to the, or references for Frywell Drilling, the peer, I don't know if they put it in writing yet, but they said it appeared to be a qualified bidder. One of the issues is, if you remember, this is done in conjunction, I don't wanna interrupt you now, but this done in conjunction with the town's wastewater, there's pump down there. Their estimate for their pump station, I think, was two, 320,000, it came in over 500,000. Being that it came in over 500,000, they now had to go to multiple contracts, I forgot the name of the law, Wick's law. They had to go to multiple contracts, so they had to rebid it to go back out for that. The town is not opening their bids up till the 13th of July. Our bid that we thought, back when we started this process, was about 226, it came in at 362, the current bid. So we don't, you know, when you're looking, if we don't know what the town's bid is, final bid numbers are gonna be, we really don't know the allocation or distribution. I've run a couple scenarios on the allocation of the, the grant monies and basically the out-of-pockets. The one scenario would be out of village out-of-pocket, if, if it comes, I think it was about 501, I had a note on this one, 501 that they came in now, I'm assuming it's gonna come in higher for the towns. If that holds through, the town out-of-pocket, after, after the $475,000, almost $476,000 of grant money is applied, the town's out-of-pocket would be 335,000, the village out-of-pocket, for our portion of it, would be 215,000. If it comes in higher, let's say 540, for the town's project that they're rebidding, and ours stays the same, our out-of-pocket would be 222,000, the town would be about 367. So that's a, you know, part cry, would be about $50,000 that we're thinking. So we've got about three options, I guess the board is three options, they can say no, forget it, reject the bid, and try to go back out the bid. But Matt has summarized pros and cons for all the different options. Now, you want me to just read them quickly? Option one, the village awards a contract to Fry, Fry's required to hold his Prince Prize, the pros, he'll do all the work, reduce all the coordination effort between us and, and our, any of our liability. Uncertainty is the town doesn't open our bid till the 13th of July, after we'd have to make that. We'd have to need a special meeting to award Fry the contract, and it'd be more, might be the more expensive option than splitting up the project to be in pieces. One of the things we looked at after it came into light is a consideration of how much is the bidder trying to protect themselves? They're a well-drilling company, and the way that the town or the state wrote this is the prime contractor had to be a well-driller. Well-drillers aren't in the press, in the business typically of doing hazardous material, hazardous building material abatement or, or building demolition. So we're trying to figure out how much might they be protecting themselves against what those parts of it are? And is there a possibility to, to look at a contract revision or a, a change order, basically to reduce the scope of the project? I looked at what the county bid has hazardous material abatement contractors on there, sent them all the information and the, and the hazardous material survey that was done. That would be about, I think it was just under 40, it's 39, 38, 39,000 for that portion of it. It sounds like there is an opportunity, if we did that and had the buildings down, for some savings off the 362, but you, then we can incur more costs on our own to do it differently, but there is a potential, I think at the end of the day, it might be about 60,000 or 80,000. But that certainly comes with certain liabilities and risks associated with it, for the village that would now be placed on a contractor to do it. So that was kind of summary one and two, and then the third option is to kind of rebid it, but the likelihood of getting it done at the right time and in coordination with the town. You know, we sat on it, we were, you know, we sat forever waiting to get the DC, you know, waiting for the final plans and waiting for the DC. If you recall, we were hoping to do this last spring and then last fall, and now this spring, and now it's gonna be, we're aiming for Labor Day right now, so. And if that's where, ultimately where we are with all this research, I'm sure I missed some spots, Don, but.
No, that's, that's.
Pretty well summed.
That's basically it, you, you, you really, you know, rejecting the bid outright is probably not the way to go. Because they were the sole bidder, so you rebid it, who's to say Fry even wants to rebid the project? You can end up with nobody that wants to do it. Or you can end up with prices a lot higher than the 362. Although if you rebid it, you probably, you could rebid it to parcel out the demolition work, you know? But.
Yeah, if you parcel out and rescale.
Yeah, but, but then you lose the coordination with the town and the grant, and plus, you know, you got the, the marina down there, they want the work done in September. Well, they would, they don't want it done while boating season is going on. You know, mayors, they want it, that's why the plan was, is to award the bids now and do the work in, after Labor Day in September, when the boating season kind of winds down. And if you, if you start all the work in, you're probably gonna miss doing the work in the fall.
Yeah, it's trying to get on people's schedule.
So. You know, to, and again, I guess Jake will address that, is Frywell Drilling, are they amenable to removing the demolition?
I think the engineers had talked to them briefly about that to see if that was a possibility. Sounds like that is a possibility, but I think there's also other considerations, since they did these in, in the end, or probably they were putting their bids together in the middle of May. There's some instances of significant price increases for some of the concrete, some of the other materials that they need. So I'm sure, kind of in, in, as an offset, they might look at saying, hey, we can do a change order for this, but we'd also request another change order for maybe material increases or things. That would have to be something negotiated, I guess, if it's, you know, possible enough, there's, you have to make sure we're doing everything right with the procurement laws.
Yeah, and there was, I guess, some discussion of the village itself actually, after the hazardous materials, any asbestos in the old wellhouses is gone, that the village itself would actually demolish the wellhouse itself using DPW people.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, clarify that with Matt, we, you know, that's a job for a shovel, not some of the equipment we have, we'd be either looking around in a shovel or, or the towns down there doing work as well, maybe coordinating the town, because we have AMA with them. And they think they're the ones to pound the bayfront pretty, pretty quickly too, you know, there's a bit of larger piece of equipment, so that might be some way to, to offset it too.
So, and, and the, the, the allocation of the grant money, and I thought the grant originally was 501,000 dollars. And I thought the grant originally was $501,000. How'd it get down to 475?
It's 501, but then it's a 5% match, so I took that 25,000 out of its grant money, but it's not. You have to match it, so I just took the true at 475. It is 501 grant, but $501,000 grant.
In total?
In total, yeah. But with the match, the true check you'd receive would be 475, not 150.
Okay. So, but the way that should get split up is based on whatever the town's and the village's actual costs are for its project. You take the total actual costs and figure out what percentage of the village and what percentage of the town, and that's how you split up the $476,000. If the village does its own work, is that zero cost?
It's interesting.
You know, is that zero cost or, you know, so now... So now, so the lower the village's actual cost, and the town's cost is probably going up because of the Wicks Law, you know, it's a lower percentage of the grant that the village ends up with, which is okay, but just as long as you understand how it works. And if the village is doing its own work, you know, I don't know if that's... If you can include... I suppose you could include the cost of renting machinery. I don't know about labor costs. I always wondered about that, because you're paying these guys whether or not they're working down there or they're working somewhere else. You're still paying them. So is it fair to allocate that as a cost to this project? I don't know. But that's something you gotta decide if you're gonna do the work yourself.
How are those costs calculated?
Because the town's gotta agree to them.
Right.
That's why if it's a bid, it's easy. $362,000. And whatever the town's is gonna come in, the town comes in and adds, and that's how you split up the grant. If you start doing work yourself, you get into a little gray area and potential disagreement with the town over what the village's actual costs are. You know, how to split up the grant. I just throw that out there.
No, it's a great...
For your edification. But you need to just... What needs to be decided between now and July 8th is whether or not you're gonna accept the bid. If you accept the bid outright, I don't know if, you know... I don't know what leverage you have. It's not really a change order, because Frywell Drilling doesn't want to change anything. You know, it's not a change order for the village to now do the demolition. It's more that you're only accepting part of the bid.
Changing the scope.
Okay, yeah, you're changing the scope, which I couldn't find any... Anything in General Municipal Law 103 or any case law where that was prohibited. The only thing I found, there's a Court of Appeals case from back in the 90s where they say, you know, that the bidding statute and the process is scrutinized very carefully. You know, so to make sure that there aren't any real deviations from it, because if there are, that could, you know, corrupt the process and blah, blah, blah. But, you know, it's a... There's only one bidder. If they're agreeable to taking out $120,000, because there's the bid and then you can accept the bid, but then there's actually... You gotta enter into a contract with them. And it's that contract that would actually change from the $362,000. But in negotiating that contract, you know, Fry could say, "Well, costs have gone up," you know, "so..." Whatever its actual price would be to cap the wells or decommission the wells, that may be more than what's in there now. And you really couldn't fault them from... For doing that, because you sort of...
It's the way it is?
You know, it's the way it is, you know? But you gotta decide, do you wanna just lock the whole thing in at the 362? Or do you wanna sort of... You know, I guess you'd accept the bid, but with the understanding that the contract's gonna be renegotiated to not necessarily reflect all of the scope of the project that was in the bid. Which is kind of open-ended.
Yeah.
You don't know whether, you know, what the timeframe is gonna be for the negotiations with Fry.
I know that they're anxious to start... You know, if they're gonna get it, they wanna order immaterial before there's more escalations in prices.
Well, that is, yes. And that's better for us, too.
So there is some give and take, but I think they certainly, if we take it, then if we accept the bid, then, you know, they're probably in a better position to negotiate. But if we reject it, then, you know, then it's said, we're gonna end for next spring now, and then who's gonna get it?
Just, yeah. But I don't want mayors to have to go through that either. I mean, they're losing...
Could we say, "Hey, mayors, as we negotiate with them for the easement and for the parcels, could we say, 'Hey, mayors, here's the five parcels with the buildings as they are, and there's $150,000 to decommission the wells yourself? And save money and not do it?'"
I mean, just give... Just give the village's share of the grant to mayors and let them do it?
Well, right now, if everything comes in like it looks like it might, the village would be out-of-pocket for $222,000. So if we said, "Hey, if you take 150,000 and decommission them yourself," and there'd have to be some sort of a promise of when they would be decommissioned. I don't know how that would work with the grant and all, everything else, but...
Yeah, I don't know if that would...
I don't know if that's a good...
Yeah, I don't know whether the state would. That's totally different than what the proposal was to the state where you got the grant at first.
Oh, I know.
I don't know at this stage if you could even...
I'm just trying to figure out how to save money.
It's not a terrible idea, but...
Well, then, look, it's the village's wells. The village actually owns the land that they're sitting on. So the village is still on the hook if they don't give... You allow somebody else to decommission them and they don't do it right.
Right.
The village has got the liability for that. So I don't know if it's a good idea just to turn it over to a third party totally and let them do it.
Why can't we accept the bid and know the change of scope?
Yeah, I think what you probably should do is accept the bid.
Yeah.
And then have Jake and/or Matt Higgins, probably Matt, whoever, you know, now get into the negotiations to see if they'd be willing to enter into a contract for less than the accepted bid price if you take out...
Yeah.
If you take out certain things. Now, as Matt points out, you know, if you're gonna basically now have three entities doing the project, and the first would be, you'd have to get the asbestos abatement people in there first, and then the village would go in, the DPW would go in to actually... Or, you know, I guess they'd take down the building last, and then you decommission the wells?
No, you take it out and then decommission wells. And that's the funny part, is he thought we, you know, would take down the superstructure, take down the building, they decommission the wells, and we'd come back in and do the floors. So then they... Because they have to cap the well six feet below ground. And I thought we would take down, do all the asbestos basement, take it down to the concrete floor, and then Fry's would take over from there and go down. You know, decommission everything and then cap it, remove that last little bit. But again, and that's a discussion we'd have to have with them, because if they're not bringing heavy equipment down there to remove concrete slabs, we'd have to figure that part of it out.
Well, the point is, is rather than having one entity, Fry, being totally responsible of the whole thing, now you gotta coordinate three entities to get the project done. And there's always, you know...
The hiccups.
There's always hiccups, and it'll probably take longer to get it done if it's three entities doing it. But you could save somewhere between $60,000 to $80,000 by doing it that way.
I think it's just time to get it done.
Yeah, just let them do the 362 and be done with it?
Just... Well, we've just messed around with it for so long.
So you gotta... I don't know what... What, if anything, was in the budget for the village's share of this?
There was, I think, $200... I didn't see, because now it's gone over like three different budget years. So I wanted to see where Marcia's got in there, how she's got it accounted, because there was an offsetting revenue. But now the revenue's gonna be actually less than what the out-of-pocket is, where before we were aiming for, you know, about $50,000.
The point is, is whatever's been budgeted for this year and in past years that have been carried forward, as long as it's enough to cover whatever the village is, if it's $200,000 or whatever it is, then, hey, at least you've already got the money.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's not like you're gonna have to take it out of fund balance or something like that.
Yeah, so let me... I can follow up with Marcia to see exactly what we've got on the accounting thing.
But I guess if you wanted...
We're free on it.
Or you could take the resolution right now to accept the bid, rather than have a special meeting, which technically you're only supposed to do in emergencies, and I'm not sure that's enough, it's an emergency or not. So you can do it now.
And we can do it now, but we're gonna skip the negotiation piece?
No.
Because I still think it's worth that and a...
No, well, the first step is to accept the bid. And then you can also indicate, but it doesn't have to be part of the resolution, you know, with the understanding, although it's not a... You can't make the acceptance, it's either accepted or rejected. You can't make it conditioned on successfully renegotiating things. But with the understanding that...
That's a wrong taking.
Jake and the village's engineer is gonna look into renegotiating it. But again, so you're willing to accept whatever hazards might be involved with now three entities doing this project rather than one?
Okay. No. You know, I think, like you say, you accept it at the 362. You do the best if you can't negotiate something, you know it's a 362. If you can, it can get better. But if we end up doing all the math and figuring out that the building demo, when it comes out, that's $15,000 is all we're gonna save, and have a ton of coordination and a ton more engineering and their involvement in it, might be like, no, for that much. It's a lot cleaner project than move the liabilities.
Yes.
All right.
So, here is a motion to... I'm looking forward to accept the...
The bid from Frywell Drilling.
Bid from Frywell Drilling regarding the Sandbar Wells.
And the amount of it was $362,000, Jake? You sure that's your number?
Yes, not to exceed 363.
Actually, Matt told me that the bid was $362,500.
$500, okay.
It was 362,500. So I have to accept that.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
Can you just do all of them? I don't have my vote sheets.
Trusty Lauer?
Jake's got it.
Aye.
Trusty Lancy?
Aye.
Trusty Valcana? Trusty Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Fiers?
Aye.
Oh, oh, that is... I forgot who said...
Okay. Well, that's good. So we saved doing a special meeting and...
Yes, that was good, Dan.
Yeah, and then I guess so work with Matt about, actually, if you wanna try to renegotiate the actual contract and see what that means.
Yeah, 100%.
And then, well, and then you can decide whether you wanna go forward with it or not.
Right.
So I suppose in September, when the village is knocking down the building, the leaves aren't on the ground yet, so you're not in the middle of doing leaves or anything else, right?
All the way, if you're still paving.
Oh, my gosh.
It's a crazy journey for the contractors and stuff, but... Yeah, we'll figure out and work with them and see. And like I said, it might not be us to try to do it ourselves, you know, with the equipment. If that labor ends up reducing the grant amount we get, you know? So you put in more work to get less money back, it seems like...
Yeah, but overall, you still gotta look at the net.
Yeah, see, no, actually...
Even the grant is left, if the overall contract price is less, the village is still ahead, even if you're getting less grant money.
No, we, you know, definitely run the numbers. What's that?
Your discussion could go on after.
Did anybody... Does everybody read the letter? If you did not, please read it and let me know, and I'll send it to their businesses. Is it all good?
Yep.
All right, I'll send it out. I tried to tell Don.
And for... I heard from Darrell. But the rest of you, did you look at the changes to the IMA with the town and the Webster, the outlaws? Are you guys okay with me sending it over to them now?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
No, it's okay.
He said it the day after he told her, the day he told us.
Okay, so we'll take care of that. We'll see where it goes.
I was trying to drag this up on my... I gotta mic up after this.